Those that are with us. And we'll just go ahead and get started. So Heather, I'm going to turn the time over to you to start us out on our planning and building fee study. Information's been given to us in our packet and we'll have a presentation tonight. So Heather and Dan, welcome.
So, good evening Mayor and councilors. Tonight we wanted to do a work session with you on the fees in the building and planning department. I've been doing this for 20-plus years and there's nothing I enjoy more than talking about fee schedules for building and planning. But anyways, it's an important discussion and it is something that we were asked to do by city leadership about two years ago when I was brought in to help assess the planning department's program. I want to introduce Dan Eds. He's with us tonight. He's with Capital Accounting Partners and we contracted with him to help us with a user fee study. And then also in our audience tonight, I don't think I've introduced you before, but Stuart Ramsing, who is our building official, is here this evening as well. And I'm happy to say, we stole Stuart as an interim building official when we needed one. He used to be the building official in Eugene and is thought of as one of the very highly regarded in the industry throughout the state of Oregon. He's agreed to come and be with us for six months to help us put the program together. And just recently, he has agreed to come on with us permanently. So we're thrilled with that. So anyways, tonight, we're going to talk about user fees. And in city budgeting, as you know, there's the general fund, which is taxpayer dollars and franchise fees that provide services for the whole community that are general services that everyone in the community enjoys. But the city also provides programs that are specialty programs that are to dedicated users. Usually those specialty programs have some sort of cost recovery associated with them because it's not something that the general taxpayer participates in. And so most cities do not want the general fund to underwrite them substantially because then the general fund is not able to do what it's meant to do, which is serve the whole population. In our department, planning, we have two specialty user programs. We have building permits as well as current planning permits. A lot of communities look at those as cost recovery programs where the permit fees pay for the programs at different levels. That's a policy decision by city council, what level that is. It is state-enabled through the Oregon legislation to collect fees for both of those programs in a dedicated way. So the fees collected are expended just on providing those programs to the users. Long-range planning is a little bit different. Some communities look at that as a means of paying for that through the current planning fees. I had put that together. The city of Bend is the only community I know that currently does that still, where they have 100% full cost recovery in their planning program, where the current planning fees play for long-range planning as well. Typically, many cities see long-range planning as something that does serve the general population and is something that is funded through the general fund. When I got here about two years ago, I was asked by city leadership to do an assessment of the planning program. After that assessment, I shared with you that there had been a lot of deferred long-range planning that had not been done. We were delinquent on it and some of it were fairly critical planning efforts that this community probably needed to see happen, such as discussions about buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis and UGBs and things of that nature. At the same time, we were also looking at the budget for planning because the general fund was putting a pretty healthy amount of money into planning and not being able to fund long-range planning, which I thought was interesting because it was a pretty standard amount that you see invested in planning across the state. So to defer as much long-range planning as we deferred, we tried to figure out what was happening within the budget. I was asked by city leadership at the time to look at a user fee study to see what the current planning fees were collecting and how much they were paying for in terms of the current planning program. So with that, we went out and did a solicitation for vendors to help us do a user fee study. And through that process, we contracted with Dan's team. I've worked with Dan before at the city of Redmond as well. And he also did the fee studies with Deschutes County, so I was very familiar with his work and have always enjoyed working with him. And he does a very thorough data-specific job. So as we were putting together the scope of work, we also realized that the city of McMinnville does not have what we call an indirect cost allocation plan either. And indirect cost allocations are those services within the city that serve the different programs that are serving the users. So for instance, human resources and administration and finance, they are not collecting direct fees for their work that they're putting into current planning and building, but there are costs associated with their work that's going into delivering those programs. So understanding what that cost is and building that into a full cost recovery model is really important for a city to really understand its full cost recovery. So we also asked Dan to do an indirect cost allocation plan for the city. That's something that can be used moving forward for any fee program we're looking at in terms of how that indirect costs go out the door to those different services. So what we're bringing you tonight is the results of that. It does show you a full cost recovery and what it means for full cost recovery for both building and planning. And then I also have provided to you what my recommendation would be in terms of a fee schedule for both those programs. You will see that currently, we're collecting about 15% of the funds required to run the current planning program. When I got here, we guesstimated it was between 10% and 15%, so we were pretty close with that. And that means 85% of the programs being underwritten by the general fund. And then in the building program, we're collecting about 87%. The reason why it's a little bit lower, we've always thought we were at 100% full cost recovery. Part of that is because of the indirect cost allocation plan that wasn't included fully into that discussion. And then we also have been working with the state as we're transitioning to a new software program. We've been working with the state pretty closely on that transition and learned that our building fee schedule is actually out of compliance with state law. So we had to go into the building fee schedule and get that compliant. And so we amended our contract with Dan and said, if we're doing that, let's look at a full cost recovery program for the building program as well and do it at the same time. So the recommendations to you tonight, I went back and looked at a lot of the paperwork for discussions here about full cost recovery for our programs. And this isn't a new dialogue for McMinnville. It has been had here before. The first planning fees were established in 1983. They were then amended in 1995 and then again amended in 2002. So we don't have a history of amending these on a regular schedule. However, in 2000, we did do a fee study at that time and we changed the planning fees and we also changed the building fees at that time, too. That was the last time we've done a fee study here. At the time of that fee study, the city had a discussion about having a 55% cost recovery for its current planning program. From what I understand, from what I'm reading in the materials, the development community expressed some concerns about that. It was never memorialized in policy and it certainly hasn't been memorialized in practice as we are coming to 2018 and have a 15% cost recovery. So I'm bringing to you two fee schedules as a result of this work as a recommendation, just to jump me off point. One shows full cost recovery for planning and then what a 55% cost recovery would look like. And then also, it has built into it a 10% escalation per year for the next five years plus CPI to get it to full cost recovery if that's where the city wants to go with that. And then the building program has a full cost recovery recommendation in the fee schedule as well. We have built the fee schedule so that they have reserves in them, a six-month reserve with a five-year buildup to that six-month reserve. That's critical because as we work through cycles of economy and with the recession we just went through, we saw lots of communities lay off. I laid off 70% of my team in the city of Redmond during the recession. And I can tell you, when you go back to rehire that type of staff, they're not there anymore. They have moved on. And so having some sort of ability to continue to deliver a program that has value in the communities and important and having that reserve to protect you to be able to do that is important as well. We also had, we've been working on this since April. Dan will walk you through what the process is, but it's very detailed. He met with every staff person that hits the program, either on the building side or the planning side, so that touches the permits as they come through, evaluates, reviews them, or delivers them out the door, to talk about how much time they spend on those processes, down to the 10 minutes. So we went down into 10-minute increments as we were having this discussion. And then we revisited it about three times. I think we came back together and said, are these assumptions correct? And we did them as a group, too, so we could challenge each other. I think you're wrong on that. Have you thought of this? That type of thing. So lots of dialogue back and forth with that. In August, we had hosted a meeting with the development community. So we sent out a note to everyone to say, we were doing this process and we wanted to visit with them about the results and get their comments. We didn't have a lot of turnout to that meeting, which surprised me, but we had what I would describe as sort of representative developers. So we had a couple of developers who build in McMinnville as well as other communities. We had a couple of developers who only build in McMinnville. We had some established developers and we had some emerging developers. So, you know, we hit the cross-section there. They had some concerns. They understood the need. So I think everyone understands the need because the long-range planning has been deferred for so long and the development community is quite frankly nervous about buildable lots, the future of development here in the community. So being able to fund that work so that it's continued and sustained is important. They obviously were concerned about the amount of the increases and what it meant. We talked a lot about service. And one of the things that was brought up was, in McMinnville, we have a history of providing service at a very high-level customer service and to two different degrees. So we provide a very high-level customer service in terms of responsiveness. We also provide a high-level customer service in terms of working with people who are coming in back a napkin and wanting the team to do design for them at the counter and talking through, you know, does this work? Does that work? Would you design it this way? Would you design it that way? And so we can spend hours with one customer who doesn't have sort of the knowledge base that a developer would have to work through a boundary line adjustment. And yet, a developer who's coming in with a subdivision or a large apartment complex is invested in the architectural and engineering team to get the work done. And so they're just submitting over the counter and there really isn't a lot of that pre-work done with them. So their discussion with us was equity. Somehow come up with something that's equitable because we're investing upfront and not taking as much of your time, but we're paying the fees associated with your time that you're putting into this. And you have others who are not making that investment, taking a large time and not paying the fees. So we tried to come up, build some of that into the fee schedules as well, in such a way that it's not punitive or onerous for, you know, for the people who are doing the smaller projects that are more in a do-it-yourself type of spectrum. And I'll walk you through that at the end of the presentation, what that looks like. We also looked at comparisons with other communities. So we wanted to understand and bring to you what full cost recovery looks like. And then we wanted to say, okay, let's have a reality check. Where do we sit with other communities with that discussion? And so we did do our comparisons. We looked at the comparisons we typically look at, so those communities that are regional and also communities that are similar sizes to McMinnville. So we sit in sort of this mid-sized city range for the state of Oregon, delivering a more sophisticated program. And so we wanted to look at other communities that are doing the same. And then those communities are typically Grants Pass and Albany and the city of Redmond, who are sitting in the same population segment. So we wanted to see where our comparables look like with them. And that's with the full cost recovery. So we wanted to see with the full cost recovery where it sits at. It's not the, what you're going to hear from Dan is not the comparables based on our recommendation for a fee schedule. And I'll walk you through that at the end of the presentation as well. So that sort of sets the stage, I hope, for Dan's presentation. This is really an opportunity for you to ask questions as we go. It's meant to be informative. We do have scheduled for December 11th to bring some proposed fee schedules to you for a public hearing. With the building program, we are under a timeframe. We are switching to our new software on January 28th. That's a drop-dead date. And so our old software system gets turned off, the new one gets turned on, and we need to legally be compliant with the state with our fee schedule for that to happen. So we need to provide a 45-day notice in terms of the building fee schedule for comments and December 11th is the last date that we will be able to do that. So that's the timeframe in which we're working. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dan, and you can walk them through your presentation.
Great. Thank you, Heather. And Mr. Mayor and members of the council, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the confidence that you all have shown in our firm to do this project. And also, Heather can't say this about herself and her team, but I can. You really have a great team here. And I very much enjoyed working with Heather and her team. Smart, dedicated, hard-working people. And I just thoroughly enjoyed working with each one. As I go through this presentation, I very much value the conversation. And so if there's a question that pops up in the middle of a slide, stop me and let's address it there. And obviously afterwards, I'm around here until you need me to get out for conversation and discussion and clarification, and I really value that. So let me just start in. And Heather did a great job of setting the stage. There's really two pieces to this project. One was to prepare what we call a full cost allocation plan that really accurately calculates the cost of city overhead and drives those costs to the various, what we would call as the receiving departments. And then the other part of the project was to calculate the full cost of building and current planning fees. And the emphasis there is really full cost. So as Heather mentioned, we're looking not just at operational cost for planning and building, but we also overlaid that or brought into that total city cost. So it really is full cost from the standpoint of the city. I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about what a full cost allocation plan means. In many of your businesses, you might frequently say, well, we have to assign or allocate overhead to our various products and services. This is kind of that idea, but the way we do it is actually quite sophisticated. In your business, you might just say, well, overhead is roughly 15% and you just apply that across the board to your products and services. In government, generally, it's not done that way. Doesn't, it's not, there's no rule or law that says it can't be done that way. But anytime a city or a county is administering a grant from typically state or the federal government, there is a very prescribed way that's used to allocate overhead costs to the various products and services of the city or the county. That process, that methodology, has been designed by the federal government because they design it, everybody sort of follows along and does it the same way. No law says it has to be done that way unless, of course, a city or a county or a state is administering a federal grant, then it has to be done that way. So the focus really is to provide a consistent methodology to assign overhead cost based on a measurable benefit for services provided. And the operative word there is measurable. So we're not just saying, well, let's assign 10% of overhead cost to the planning department. We're looking for measurable indicators, what I would refer to as consumption. So how does the planning department or the building department consume the resources of HR, of IT, of the city council? And we're looking for measurable indicators to drive those costs to, in this case, planning and building. The way we do that, or I'm going to, I've got three slides here that gives you more or less an illustration of how this is done. It's strictly hypothetical. So here, for example, you see human resources, which is hypothetically $500,000. There's a variety of ways that we can apply those costs to, again, what we would refer to as receiving departments, fire department, police department, recreation and community development. One way would be just to say, well, let's just allocate that out across the board. There's four different departments. Let's just give 25% to each one. That might work in a lot of situations, but the federal government would say, we're not going to do that. Another way would be to say, well, let's take human resource and drive that cost to those four departments based on FTE. So if, say, the police has twice the number of FTE in that department as the fire, then it's going to get twice the number, twice the amount of HR cost. Another way of doing that would be to base it on total labor cost. That would also be a rational way of allocating the cost of the HR department. But a more precise way would be to base it on total hiring and terminations. So the HR department has a function. It hires people and it fires people. So let's base the cost on the number of new hires and the number of terminations or dismissals. That would also be a perfectly rational way of allocating cost to those various receiving departments. But it's actually more robust analysis than that. So the human resource typically, or human resource department, would typically have at least two primary functions, hiring and terminations, as well as administering benefits to the workforce. So in this case, what we would typically do is to look at both, how do we allocate cost to both of those functions first and then how they then transfer cost to those four different departments. So we could look at total hiring and terminations and then total benefit cost, again, as a way, as a methodology of assigning cost to those four departments. And I'll stop in case there happens to be a burning question about cost allocation plan. Yes, sir?
I think what I'd like to do, Dan, is just move over to Marcia and, because I know she worked hand-in-hand during this process, and what were our learnings as we went through this? We've had a number of federal grants and so we've, I think, followed somewhat a prescribed approach. But, you know, HR is now a newer department for us. So could you just share a little of your learnings, Marcia, and where you see where we were and kind of where we're headed with this indirect cost?
Well, I would say I was very impressed, working with Dan, that his model is fairly complex. And we certainly had not ever done anything quite this sophisticated as far as estimating indirect costs. And so I think that, I know Will, Dan, I believe you also will be working with Park and Rec on a fee study. So the work that was done with Heather on the planning and building will also be a benefit to us as we go through the Park and Rec fee study. You know, a lot of the work on the indirect costs has been done. So I think it's time well-spent on our end. Dan was very detailed and meticulous and we worked really hard to make sure that he had the information that he needed.
Good. I'm glad those, you know, it helped us refine what we were doing, but again, being fee-based, again, planning and permits and then park and recreation are probably our primary areas that are fee-based. Thank you, Marcia. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Appreciate the question, too. So in this slide, you'll notice that I have another box there on the right-hand side. It says human resource and a line that goes from that box back up to the human resources on the upper left-hand corner. And at the top of that, there's a text box that says double step-down. Now, you might have to be a federal auditor to really appreciate the value of a double step-down, either that or have a demented mind that just enjoys detail like this. But as you can imagine, human resource, they also are a recipient of the cost of administering benefits. They are also recipient occasionally of having to hire new staff internally for that, for their own department and/or maybe terminating staff. And so they are both the, shall we say, the contributor of cost, but they also receive cost internally. And so the federal government says, you have to do what's called a double step-down, which means you take the cost that you've just assigned, in this case, human resource is just assigned to itself for its own internal operations. You have to take that cost and run it back through the system again. And so it all gets reallocated out a second time. That's why we call it a double step-down. And again, we might be the only people on the planet that gets excited about double step-downs, but in this case, this is how we do it. This is really, and I apologize for the lack of clarity in the slide, but...
I did just send the PowerPoint to everyone, so in an email if you want to bring it up on your tablet.
Thank you, Heather. But you see on the far left-hand, those are the various organizations within the city that are assigning costs across the board. So you see administrative services, the city manager. Those costs have been allocated out to each of those receiving departments that you see on the top right. And if you go over far enough, you'll see a column that says building, building and building fund, and then planning. And so the numbers that you see at the very bottom, those are the costs that we assign to those two various functions. This is just as an example. I pulled this off of a summary report that's about 14 pages long, which is backed up by about 500 pages of additional documentation in case you're interested for late-night reading material. Yes, ma'am?
So one of the items listed here in the source of indirect cost was the mayor and city council with a total cost of 100 and just over $171,000. And then that fell, those costs fell under engineering, planning and police. Can you help me understand that particular item?
Sure. Sure. So if I may, let me just take the city council. So you are an administrative governing body. This meeting, you sitting here deliberating, there's a cost to that. And so I'd have to go back and actually look at the model, but typically what we do is say, okay, there's a certain cost for the city council. How do we assign that cost to the various receiving departments? And one of the, again, I'd have to look at the model, but probably what we did was we took agenda items. So the cost for the city council is driven to those receiving departments based on the number of agenda items. So clearly, you have agenda items that's tracked by the city clerk. And we said, okay, in the last year, how many agenda items were part of police and part of fire and part of engineering? And we took that number then to drive the cost of the city council to those departments. That answer your question?
So it's the time staff puts into processing and putting together the council meeting packets and participating in council meetings and things of that nature.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. All right. So now specifically about the user fee study, again, we're really talking about two different projects that come together. And generally what we do, and it was true in this case, we started both projects, they ran in parallel, and then we got done with the cost allocation plan, then the projects come together. I'm incorporating the data, the financial data that came out of the user fee study, incorporating that into the fee structure. So you're really, we're really talking about full cost recovery. And this, what I'm really looking at is, what I want to go over with you is the methodology or approach and some of the results. So again, the scope of this project was planning and building. And this is a hypothetical model of how I do these kinds of projects. It's really a driver-based costing model. It's actually very similar to the way we do an indirect cost allocation plan. Again, what we're looking for are numerical drivers of cost. So in this hypothetical case, what we're looking at is the product, if you will, or the service, is a site plan review. And in the model, we're saying, okay, there's a planning tech that's involved with that. There's a planner one, there's a planner two, and the planner, planning director, all have touchpoints on a site plan review. Those touchpoints are the, really the processes or the activities that are involved in processing a site plan review. In this case, there is an application intake, there's an application review, there's a review of application for conditions of approval, and there's a report to the planning commission. And literally what, as Heather mentioned, we sat down, we were staffed and we went through in detail who touches each application type by the activities and the processes that are involved. And then we had like an internal debate. Heather would say, I think this is how much time it takes. And someone else would say, no, that's what it took last week in that one that was driving you crazy. So we actually, it's a consensus-driven process. And we actually didn't, we don't go forward until there is consensus. And actually, I believe... And actually, I believe that, in this case especially, that the process is as important as the outcome. So it's very process-driven. And so when we get done with that, we could go back, if you want, we could say, why does the site plan review cost what it does? And we could look at every activity and every process that's involved, and we could track it by position and by activity. Any question about that? Okay. So frequently in these projects, invariably, somebody will say, well, how do you know if your data is good? And that's a relevant and important question. And we actually have quality control checks throughout the whole process. So one of those is budget expenses entering the cost model must equal total expenses accounted for within the costing model. So if I have a million dollars of budget going into a model, at the output of that model, I have to account for a million dollars. And my margin of error for that is really, really tight. Projected revenue from fees must closely match actual revenues from fees. So in my model, if I project out current revenue of a million dollars, I need to look at a document from Marcia that says, what was your revenue in the last 12 months for this particular function? And it needs to be pretty close to a million dollars. If it's way over or way less, I go back into the model and say, okay, where's the data that's missing? What's wrong? What needs to be tweaked? I'm also looking at available staff time. So if I have 10,000 hours in a department, and that is 10,000 hours, which is net of vacation time, sick leave, holiday time, paid holiday, or paid holiday time, training time, because staff have to go to training to maintain their certifications and their professional qualifications. If I have 10,000 hours of staff time that's available, I have to account for 10,000 hours, and my model actually blinks red at me if I have basically about a second more than 10,000 hours. Total revenues from fees and contributions from the general fund or other sources must match total expenses. It's kind of a restate of number one. But again, what I'm looking for is a model that can be verified from existing data to say, yeah, okay, we have, all of our cross-checks match and we're good.
And if I may add to that, so with the staff time, we made sure with planning that we removed any hours that were dedicated with the different FTEs into long-range planning. So for most staff, that's 50% at this time. So we removed them. In my case, I'm also staffed into building and urban renewal, and we removed those hours as well. So we tried to get into as true a number as possible.
Right, absolutely. Thank you, Heather. So this is a high-level overview of the results. So you see planning there. Revenue at full cost of services would be $280,000. Compare this with my projection of revenue at current fees of $41,000. In other words, the general fund is subsidizing planning fees to $238,000. On the building side, my projection of current revenue is $823,000. Revenues at current fees, my projection, $719,000. So the general fund is subsidizing $103,000. If you wanted to add reserves to that, you can see that on the far right-hand side. $28,000 for planning, $82,000 for building, a total of an additional $110,000 for reserves. And I'll get into that more in just a second. Any comments or questions about this?
I guess a question, and this is answering, this is answering that quandary that we had, how much was really coming out of a general fund. Did this take you a bit by surprise, Heather?
No.
Okay. So you knew we were not having, exactly knowing where we were, but you had a sense that we were, we weren't pricing ourselves the way we needed to be for a recovery?
Right. So to put it in perspective, the general fund was, is investing in the planning department at the same level that the city of Redmond's general fund invested into that department. That department had a multimillion-dollar budget. The one here is less than a million dollars. So, you know, the fee structure is very different in terms of the user fee and revenue collected.
Okay. Thank you. So this obviously puts, or just quantifies what's the obvious. Current cost recovery for current planning is 15%, and for building is 87%. Let me quickly add, however, that from Heather's perspective, that was nothing new. Having done dozens of these and knowing that it's been several years since you've done a fee study or adjusted the fees, it's really nothing new to me either. This is exactly what I would have expected. There are several things that drive cost recovery. One of those typically would be productive hourly rates. Don't keep up with inflation. So it's very common for me to say, well, we base our cost on some kind of a calculation of hourly rate. And it's like, well, how do you calculate those hourly rates? Well, we haven't really changed them in 25 years. That's like everyday occurrence for me. Fees are not regularly updated. Now, you'll see in my recommendation, my standard recommendation always is to update fees regularly, like at least every other year, if not annually. I think that's good financial practice. It keeps fees updated with cost, and it maintains that nexus between cost and revenue that I think, from my perspective, is very, very important. City overhead rates are frequently not assigned to fees. You'll see in the comparison study and the write-up that I have in the report, one of my comments or one of my cautions about a comparison study is you don't know whether or not, let's just say the city of Newburgh adds citywide overhead to their fees. In your case, we've done a very robust, a very thorough analysis of your user fees, and we've included that, so it really is full cost recovery from the standpoint of the city. Changes in regulation, the trend obviously is for more regulation, higher cost over time. And this is probably especially true in planning, although I would certainly leave that observation. That's more Heather's worldview than mine. But if, when regulations are added to a planning application, clearly there is more cost, there's more time involved. I've got a couple of projects I'm working on right now where they are updates of planning fees, and it's amazing how much those can go up in cost just within two or three or four years. An application that used to take four hours now takes six. And then finally, building fees, because so many, so much of your building revenue is based on building fees that are calculated based on the value of the project, building fees have an automatic inflator adjustment. As construction cost goes up, so the revenues go up. And so when you see that kind of disparity of 87% for building revenue, building cost recovery, and 15% for planning, from my perspective, that kind of disparity is not uncommon at all. Any questions? Okay, moving on to the comparison study. And this is where I always have to caveat, an apple is not necessarily an orange. And so there are cautions that I always express when doing a comparison study, and there are several, actually. And so I'll just go down through the list. First of all, a comparison study is really comparing cost with price. We have established the full cost for each individual building fee and planning fee. If you look at someone else's fee schedule, it's their price. It's not necessarily their cost. City overhead, as I mentioned, may or may not be included. Fee descriptions and definitions don't always match. One city will take a à la carte approach to their fees while another may bundle services. Comparing different models of cost recovery, flat fees versus deposit-based or time and material fees. Some communities do not routinely update fees with a robust cost analysis. Some don't even do it annually. I've got clients right now where they haven't updated their fee in 14 years. I know that because I did their last fee study 14 years ago. And so, you know, looking at their fee schedule now and comparing it to their neighbors, I happen to know this because I'm working right now with two of their neighbors. So I, I mean, I see the disparity very clearly of current, a current fee versus their neighbor's fee. Service levels can vary dramatically. And actually, I'll use, I won't name the cities, but I'm working with three cities that are literally neighbors. City A, B, C, and D, and they're right next door to each other. City A, for their building, if you call up City A and you want a, you want a building inspection, you call up by 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and it's guaranteed you'll have your building inspection by 10 o'clock the next day. Building B, it's pretty good. It's by 3 o'clock the next day. City C will get it within the next 10 days. I don't know how they stay in business, but they do. So, you know, service levels can really vary dramatically, and all of that has an impact on the actual costing of those fees. Building valuation fees may have multiple methods of calculating value. Some of those methods may include given construction value. So I walk into Heather's building department and I say, I'm building up, I'm putting up a $100,000 project. And many cities would say, fine. They take that. Other cities will use the International Code Council or the ICC valuation table to establish value. And some will use a combination of both. All of that can mean that the same project can have very different fees depending upon the city and the, all of the various ways of calculating value. So here are the benchmark cities that we looked at. Newburgh, Woodburn, Tigard, Sherwood, Wilsonville, Albany, Redmond, Grants Pass, and Tuolleton. And this is the table that has all of the results of the comparison study. I won't go through this line by line, but I do have some tables just by way of illustrating, illustration. And I also, one of the things I'd really like to do is say, please don't look at any individual fee. Look at the trend. Look at all of the fees in total. Is the, are the fees in McMinnville on balance? Are they extremely high relative to other cities? Are they extremely low? Or are they on balance within a reasonable range? And in this, these three different projects, you see here a 2,250 square foot custom home. As I look at that graph, I see, okay, the total fees is kind of within a fairly tight band of everybody else. If I look at a 10,000 square foot industrial commercial, say, yeah, they're probably, the cities actually have maybe the upper end of that band, but still within a reasonable trend. 300 square foot room addition, I look at that, I'd say, you're clearly, in terms of cost, lower than everybody else. But I will leave it up to you to determine, you know, what is an appropriate level of cost recovery. My counsel to bodies, governing bodies such as yours, is to look at the trend of all of it combined and don't look at any individual fee all by itself and say, we are all high or we're all low. Yes, ma'am?
This is based on the current fees that are not, not the fee schedule that you're...
What you see in the red bar is the, is the cost that we calculated.
Full cost recovery. Cost recovery, okay. I see. So not current fees or proposed fees?
Gotcha.
I understand now.
Thank you for that question.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. So this is planning. And again, the red bar is the full cost that we calculated. And on the property line adjustment, you see there that Redmond is obviously higher. That might be because I did Redmond's planning fees a few years ago. Conditional use permit, the full cost would be, again, within a, in my judgment, a reasonable band. Assigned permit review, really at the upper end of that band. But again, my counsel is always, look at the trend, look at the total. Don't look at any individual fee and say, we're all, we're way too high or way too low. Some individual fee items are going to be high, some are going to be low. Probably most you'll find you're right in that middle range someplace.
So can I ask another question about the data from the comparison communities? This, this is where you were talking about the apples and oranges. Getting this data, you did a lot of work to get this data and have it be really accurate for McMinnville. How are you getting the data from the other communities?
Yeah, great question. Very good question. Yeah. Couple of sources. One, Heather had, and I forget who did, went, checked everybody's fee schedule?
Rebecca Holmes did it for us, yeah.
Yeah. She had already done some of this work. So I took her work and where there were some gaps, I literally go to their website, pull up their fee schedule, and try and make a match, you know, item to item. Some cases, I call. That's typically pretty ineffective for me. Most of the time, I don't get callbacks. If I call up one of your neighboring cities and say, okay, I'm looking at your fee schedule, I'm trying to figure out what your fees would be for a 2,250 square foot, you know, custom home, I may or may not get a callback. If that's the case, I'm going to be asked, Heather, can you research that? But generally speaking, it comes from public sources such as websites. That's, that's, that's actually the most effective way we get in.
Okay.
And that is even, that assumes that their website, the fee schedule that's on their website is accurate. I find plenty that are not necessarily that accurate.
Yeah. Which is why looking at the trends instead of, then if you have any errors on any individual ones, it doesn't skew too much.
Right, right.
You're getting out of it.
And again, you don't know the components of cost. You don't know, I'll just pick on Newburgh. You don't know if they've done a study like this in recent years.
It could be not cost recovery at all.
Right.
Right. But they are doing a study right now. Oh, okay.
Okay, good for them. You don't know if they have a policy to intentionally keep fees low. Several years ago, I was in a similar project for the city of Hillsborough. They have a policy where they intentionally keep building fees low or planning fees really low. I've had cities where they keep planning fees really, really low, but then they make it upward on the building side. And so those are all policy discussions and considerations that you just don't know by looking at a fee schedule, if in fact there even is policies on those, on cost recovery.
Well, and low to their comparable. So Hillsborough, because we pulled metro area, too, Hillsborough is more than proposed full cost recovery for McMinnville, but for the metro area, it's very low. So it's, so it's looking at your comparisons across the board. I think those three planning fees are good illustrations of the different types of policy decisions that I've seen cities make. So for instance, assigned permit review, so you have what the full cost recovery would be for McMinnville and then what the actual published fees are for the other communities. Most communities say, you know what, assigned permit takes some time to review, sometimes they're complicated, but you don't want to put a fee on it at such a level that, you know, it's more expensive than one buying the sign and installing it. And two, it's actually, if you're, so for instance, in McMinnville, we don't have assigned permit on a land use side, so i.e. why we've had some issues with the code enforcement piece of that. So you want to encourage people to actually come in and submit the application so that you can work with them and make sure the sign that goes in is actually compliant with the code. So you're making some value decisions there, and you'll notice that we, in our recommendation, are recommending that it be substantially lower than what the full cost recovery is. Property line adjustments are typically a smaller developer type of initiative, so a lot, especially in McMinnville, we see this a lot, it's individuals who are, you know, a lot of your DIY type of developers who are doing things, individual project. And so usually those are adjusted down. And then the conditional use permit's interesting to me that we're falling at that level. For different communities, conditional use permits are different types of assessment. So that, you know, the conditional use permit and the legal test for what you as a community want to say is a conditional use in a zone can vary widely across the board, across the different communities. And so it's reflecting what that value system is locally.
So that could reflect that we, our conditional use process is less administratively arduous than how it's set up in other communities.
Yeah. So we have a four-part test here, some communities will have an eight-part test, you know, whatever it is for the conditional use. And then your larger... whatever it is for the conditional use. And then your larger, your larger land use processes, so planned development subdivision, UGB amendment, those types of things, are, you'll usually see cities trend somewhat similarly in their fees, because one, they're big efforts and you're working, the applicants are typically across the board, this, the same type of standard. They're, they're people who are hiring their teams and putting the projects together, and, and are very rare in terms of applications that are coming through the door. So they're not the, you know, we have 50 applications of property line adjustments a year, and one UGB amendment every 10 years, that type of thing. So.
Great. Thanks, Heather. And I would just echo Heather's comment about the signed permit review. There are, there's always a handful of permits, both on the building side and the planning side, where it's probably more important to get the permit than it is to get the revenue. My classic example on the building side is an inspection for a new hot water heater. I've done those typically, you know, $250 or $300 to get a hot water heater inspected. You can go to Home Depot and buy one for that, less money than that. So if you charge that, you're probably not going to get, have too many people actually come in and get a permit. And that's a great example. Where we're getting the permit, having that inspection done, is more important than the money, because if those things are inspected wrong, and it's a gas hot water heater, you got a bomb going off. And that's kind of dangerous for the city. So that, so thank you, Heather, for that reminder.
Yeah, I'm looking to see what our hot water heater permit recommendation is. Okay. Are we safe? We're safe?
So Heather, thank you for that reminder.
That was close.
So this is my last slide. But if there's another one here for questions, not their last opportunity for questions. So here's my stand, and some of the, most of these are actually pretty standard. Set policies or targets for fee generating revenues consistent with community values, but also that will maximize cost recovery. I have a basic bias for as full cost recovery as reasonable. My reasons for that is because my observations, I see when cost recovery is intentionally or unintentionally kept low, there's a real impact on the ability to maintain technology. I've got a client right now, it's the one I mentioned earlier, they haven't, they haven't really adjusted their fees in 14 years. It's no real surprise that they're working off a permitting system that's 20 years old, and they don't have any money to upgrade it. Really strengthens the general fund. And I know you all have been working hard to maintain the integrity and to build the integrity of your general fund. And keeping revenues from fee generating services as high as possible really protects that integrity. And it also strengthens the ability to maintain high levels of customer service. Broad brush observation, probably a few examples I could find that, that don't match this observation, but in general, my observation is those cities that have the highest level of cost recovery tend also to have the highest level of customer service. And then adjust fees annually and perform an update every three to five years, standard recommendation of ours. You know, update these fees typically, you know, simplistically through some kind of a labor, annual labor adjustment. So if labor cost goes up in the, within the city, or at least within the departments by 5%, adjust fees by 5%. It's a simple way of doing it. It's easy. It's transparent. And then every three to five years, redo this kind of analysis, for no other reason than simply because the regulatory environment has probably changed in three to five years, and there's a new, there's this new cost structure built into the, into the departments. And then thirdly, consider building reserves for, for development services. Heather's already mentioned this. Doing that maintains intellectual capital in the event of an economic downturn, protects the general fund during an economic downturn, and provides, again, that source of funding for technology maintenance and improvements. Since the recession, virtually every one of my clients, the first thing they say is, we want to start building reserves. And I think across the board, we've been able to do that. And, and so they're, they're generating revenues and building up reserves for that rainy day. But the other thing that I'm starting to notice, and I don't know if it's a big issue here, Heather, but frequently, a project, and let's just say it's a, it's a fairly large commercial project, that may be in construction for a year or longer, you need to have money set aside, because that project is going to be consuming resources of the city for longer than a year. So you get, you get revenues today, but Heather has to have a team of building inspectors that's going to go out to do those inspections 12, 18, 24 months from now. So that's, that's another good reason. Have some reserves set aside to fund those ongoing project requirements. So with that, I'm done formally. But again, please, I'm, I'm here for questions. Thank you, Dan.
Can I just interject for a minute? With the time remaining, one of the things we're looking for our staff is, is recommendation, what you'd like to see us bring to you is a fee schedule that represents a certain level of cost recovery, if that's an interest of yours. And as I did describe, the, the building fee schedule is on a timeliness issue at this point in time. And so we've prepared two recommendations. They're just starting points for dialogue, but if, based on your direction, we'll bring back proposed fee schedules for a public hearing at your December 11th meeting.
Thank you, Heather. So let's start with any questions of Dan from any, any of our council members. Alan, go ahead.
Just much a question, just as a thought, like piggybacking on the water heater permit fee. It's, I think it's always been on my mind for many, many years, is that the city has a, a certain amount of liability when they come out and do an inspection. Not total, not anything near it. But there is some liability that if something is done wrong or inefficiently, that there is some liability on the city's part. So I look at that, I'm going, how does that factor in on all these inspections? And you brought up the water heater. If something would go wrong on that, obviously, there's more than $50 worth of damage done. So is that a factor in where you place these, if you're talking 55% cost allocation and 100%? How, how does that factor in on the overall, not just the water heater?
Okay. Great, great question. So if I may repeat your question, so for, for my clarity, it's really how do you factor in risk to the city on these services? Obviously, there is some ongoing risk to the, to the city. And my answer to that typically is, it's really hard to quantify a value on risk. However, and, and, and the objective of the, this, of these studies is to be very precise in, in tracking cost back to a budget. Oregon is this way on the building side. And Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but every four years, the state comes in and audits the books of the building department to make sure that the city isn't generating excess revenues, and then funneling it off to go build and put up a, you know, build a new swimming pool. California says, if you, if your cost for a fee is $100, you can charge up to $100, but you can't charge $100 and one penny. So they get very, very precise on that. So you have to really drive everything back to a budget. But to your point, and this is maybe simplistic, so one of the things I will typically ask in looking at building fees especially is, you're going to go out to do an inspection, it's going to be a 20-minute inspection, what's the probability you have to go back for a reinspection? And usually, there's a 20% probability, 50% probability. So I do factor the probability for a, an additional inspection into those, into those fees. That's probably not as complete a answer as you were looking for, but that's the best I could do, frankly.
But we didn't, we didn't add a risk factor to the cost, to, to the indirect cost?
I, I would argue that there, that there is, to the extent that part of the overhead cost includes the insurance, that the, that the city maintains general liability insurance related to the actions and omissions of its employees. So we have that liability, whether we're charging a fee for the service or not, because we have an obligation to go out and perform those inspection services and carrying out our function with the building code, enforcement of the building code. So by, by charging the fee, we are at least shifting some of that.
Right. And we do have insurance costs driven to those, those fees. Thank you.
And that was, went through that double-stepped?
Mm-hmm. Double-stepped down.
Is that you? Okay.
Right. Yes. Excellent.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So with regards to, in the proposed, there are some that go above the cost, actual cost of, in this proposed. I'm going to look at my notes for the ones. There are very few of them, but what drives that when you decide to go over what it costs? Is that to try to recover for, you know, others that you had to go under, or?
So there, there shouldn't be any that go, in terms of our recommendation, there shouldn't be any that go over the full cost recovery, the manufactured home ones, I think. Maybe I'm read, misreading it.
Page three of the draft building code schedule, the manufactured dwelling placement fee.
Oh, yeah. Full cost recovery oning is one, oh, that's the current fee. I might have misread that. Okay. So that wasn't the cost, that was the current fee?
No, so that might be an error on our part. So I'll star that and look at that again. It could be that the current fee was 132, and the full cost recovery is 215.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I, I'm not sure. The intention is not to go over the full cost recovery.
Oh, okay. So that's just a mistake. Right. Okay. All right. And then the other question I had was with regards to the reserve. So is the reserve a fixed amount that once we get to that point, it's in a bank account, and then that, the fee will change, so we're not collecting that anymore? Or how does that function when we have to draw down on it and then goes up again?
Yes. Great question. So the way we set it up in conversations with Heather and her team, we decided that a six-month reserve is appropriate. And that's pretty, pretty traditional. And generally speaking, I see reserve policies or objectives of anywhere from six to 18 months. If I'm working with a city that has a lot of variation in, in development activity, goes up and down a lot, I'll sort of lean on them to go a little bit higher. If it's fairly constant, back off a little bit, make it, make it, you know, fairly low. And so we said, okay, what's, what's a six-months reserve look like? Well, it's a certain amount of money. We divide that by five. That's the amount of money that you have to collect every year. But in five years, generally what happens is, you need to be putting money aside every year for reserves, just because the, the reality is you're going to be spending some of that, because you're going to have to have, update a permitting system, which you've done right now.
Doing it right now.
Doing it right now.
For free.
For free. So five years, probably a pretty good chance that's going to have to be upgraded. You may have new staff. Maybe staff salaries in certain positions have gone higher than the general, you know, city increase in labor. So there's usually, at least from my perspective, there's lots of ways that that money gets spent.
Right. So, so that's factored in when you're deciding how, what the rate that you, you have data that says, but it's drawn down by this amount, so it's pretty consistent.
Yeah.
And, and just to add, so in, at the city of McMinnville, you have previously adopted a provision in your resolutions for the building fee schedule, which identified, one, a building reserve of one year, not six months. We reduced it to six months, because there's lots of other fees that we weren't charging that by state law we needed to charge, and we didn't want to jump the fee schedule too much. But with that said, you also have a provision that says when the reserve account exceeds the reserve needs by X percent, then we will look at reducing the fee schedule. So when the bank gets too large, the discussion is, let's look at reducing the fee schedule. That's been in the building fee program for many years now, since 2002. And it's something we would recommend going forward.
Okay.
For both programs, actually.
I guess my last question is, if we're looking at the fees and we're comparing, like we just did, like the column, the cost column and the full cost recovery, where do you put in the, the fee that then goes over to the, over to the reserve?
The full cost recovery, so what Dan didn't show you tonight is his model, which is very, very complex, but a great model, and he's provided it to us. It has, it has a, the full cost recovery reflects the reserve buildup in a separate column. The full cost recovery has that number in there, but we can, as we, when we're putting together the program through a seller, a new software program, we can dedicate where certain funds will go with each permit fee into different accounts. So we can set that up.
Okay. Good. Good job. I'm done.
We've got about six minutes, and we have a, an end thing that we need to do. So can I just start the discussion a little bit, and then if we need clarification? You know, I, I see in 2002, the city conducted a development services user fee study, and at that point, we were elected to collect at 100% full recovery on building, and it says strive to be at 55% recovery on planning. I just throw that out possibly as a starting point. And, and Dan's study showed that we weren't at 100% on building, we were at 87. And if my notes are right, we were about at 12% in planning. So I just throw that out on the table and see what thoughts council might have. If indeed, we went back to where previous councils had us going 155 without not striving, but that's what, that's what our fee schedule ought to look at. So I'll throw that out on the table. Any, any thoughts? Alan?
Yeah, I remember us, some discussion a few of us had a few years ago that prompted this, this whole thing, in that it, it just was not quite an accurate thing to have, or the proper thing to do, to have the building and planning and engineering departments subsidize, be subsidized by the general fund. In other words, fun, funds being directed out of the general fund to basically keep, prop up the departments. And the idea was to get to a point where they could be 100%, and that those funds could be directed where the general use could be better, better served in the community.
So with that being said, Alan, what are your thoughts? And where should we possibly, do you see, following Dan's approach, where we go possibly with a 155% recovery, and then work towards 100% recovery over a five to six-year period?
Oh, yeah. I, I agree with that, you know, given, we'll have some more public hearing on this, and more facts that come up. But I think that, that's, that's the goal. I think that's the way to go. I think that as a member of the building community, like Wendy, Stassen's here, the building community is, would love to be great in harmony and partnership with the city planning and building department. That, that's just the way we like to do things. And so if we're work, both working towards a common goal, then those extra costs that builders have to bear upfront go to a good purpose of sustaining a partner, such as the building and planning department. So that's a win-win thing there. And then overall, the city, the general fund benefits, and the overall, the citizens do.
Well, the, the big thing is, you know, if we can keep the levels and having that customer service that we're known for, then it, the turnaround for the building, the contractors is, is where it needs to, and it's a great place to do business. So I'll go down. Remy, any thoughts or questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple of thoughts. I, I, I agree that the general fund shouldn't be subsidizing these departments. I think in the proposal that's in front of us, there's a, oh, two things that jump out at me is giving, just causing me a little bit of pause. One is that we don't have a clear plan, or, or perhaps you have a clear plan, but we haven't seen a clear plan for that reserve fund, how it would be used, and, and that kind of timeline, and what that max amount would be, and, and all of the planning that would need to go along with that. And then the other thing is something that you kind of brought up with your hot water heater example, just in, in looking through this, that some of the, there's a lot of smaller items that have a comparatively high proposed fee associated with them. So, you know, on one page, a heat pump... So, you know, on one page, a heat pump, you know, which is something that costs $3,000, less, not including the installation, has a proposed permit fee of $50. And then a garbage disposal also has a proposed fee of $50. And so I worry especially with some of these smaller items. And I heard you, when you said that you didn't want to go above the full cost recovery on any of the individual items, but I actually wonder if there wouldn't be a benefit to trying to create more balance than that if, you know, a higher cost item or an item that's perhaps slightly more, more of a luxury item, right? A sink, I mean, sinks can be luxury items without a doubt, but a sink is going to be necessary in most structures. So I would just, I guess, want to pause a minute in reviewing, as you brought up, the equity, the equity of how these proposed fees are spread out to these very individual items.
Yeah, so the appliances, in the building fee schedule, the appliances is the one that's going to, most builders are going to look at and go, oh, we haven't paid for that before. So that's going to be the discussion point. That's the piece that we were missing. And what you see there is the full cost recovery is the time to do the inspections for that. I'm going to turn to Stuart because I'm not sure we can overcharge for an item in building. The city can choose to underwrite and subsidize certain elements of building, but I think state law.
Something to address when we come back.
That might be something to address when we come back and have answers to that.
The state has a lot of regulations as to how the building fee schedule can be put together and has created a frame for policy decisions. So we'll have to look at that.
Would you mind if I responded to that?
Sure.
Most states have some, have some kind of regulation on how much you can charge for a fee. And typically, it's up to cost, but no more than cost. And various states will define fee differently. State of California defines fee as a hot water heater. State of Oregon defines fee as the department. And those, so those two calculations are quite different, but the bottom-line way we do the analysis is what does it cost to do the inspection? Yes, a hot water heater is a, you know, fairly nominal amount of money to go out and buy one. A heat pump is way more expensive, but it doesn't cost the city anymore to go out and do the inspection. Okay. I'll turn to my left. Any thoughts from Adam or Sal?
Yes, first, thank you for taking the time with this report. It's really thorough and I appreciate it. So if we were to increase, say, just for the planning department fees to 55% cost recovery, that would add another 100 and something thousand dollars to the budget in year one. And then if we were to go to 100% over time, it would add 200,000, 240,000 over the time. Is there a plan for what to do with the additional money in year one already? Or, I mean, I know that's probably not to you, but to Heather?
Yeah, so currently, the way I'm used to the planning department's budget operating is that current planning is funded through user fees, long-range planning is funded through the general fund. And here in McMinnville, for many years, the general fund funded current planning and didn't fund long-range planning, right? So we've been scrambling to get grants. Last year in the budget season, you guys did up the planning budget to provide for some long-range planning opportunities, so match for grants and some consultant services to get some of those efforts going. My hope is, is if the decision is that current planning goes into a full cost recovery state, that the savings can then fund the long-range planning and the general fund is not impacted any more than it is in terms of planning activities. But we're able to have both programs moving forward, if that makes sense.
So we're back to a discussion to give some direction to Heather. I mean, she has before us a fee schedule, and I think we have on the table again, for simplicity, 100% recovery on building and 55% recovery on planning. Is that a message that we want to send to her?
Yeah, I think that's a good message to send. Obviously, public hearing input will still play a factor in my decision, but I think as a starting point, that's, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. And I'm seeing heads nod.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would it be a starting point with a plan to eventually get to 100% on planning?
Yeah, so my recommendation to you is initial 55% cost recovery.
And over years.
With the recommendation that the fee schedule be increased by 10% plus CPI over the next five years towards a full cost recovery.
And so that's what we're saying, that we're supporting, that plus the, towards full recovery.
You're not voting on?
No, no, but like just being clear, that's, I agree with that.
Yeah, she'll be much more prepared to come to us with, I guess it would be a resolution of the fees.
Yeah, that would have some, so the resolution would adopt a fee schedule, which would be your current fee schedule with provisions in it about how we manage the fee schedule.
And we can have further discussion at that point, but I want her to be focused so that it's not a back and forth and taking months and months to get where we need to be.
I'm comfortable with moving forward in that direction, but, you know, especially with that idea that some of these would be then increasing annually, it just emphasizes to me even more that some of these, some of these fees, the water heater example, with some of these smaller fees, I think we're going to, that we could run into issues with them.
And so my thought would be, is if there are specific fees that you have a concern about, get ahold of Heather and just share that and maybe let the council know also. Nope?
Only at the meeting can you let them know.
Only at the meeting.
Communicate directly with Heather.
With Heather.
I will follow the rules.
Alan?
Mayor, Heather, you've thought about this, I'm sure, is making sure the building community is aware of the public hearing that's coming up.
Yeah, so we are. We don't typically notice our public hearings for fee schedules, from what I understand. I did speak with the city attorney and said, "I would like to notice them so that there is public notice." We also sent out an email to our email distribution group, the building community. Please feel free to share. I'd much rather there be knowledge than not and surprise at the counter.
I think it's so important because you're really targeting one particular group of people in our community that are going to be paying the extra fees. It'd be good to bring them in, bring them along at the same time.
Okay. Well, thank you for your input, Heather. You have a direction from a staff's perspective now?
Yes.
For us. Dan, thank you again. Well put together, a very difficult and arduous process to go through. When I looked at the pack initially, I says, "Oh." But as I got into it, the narrative really helped, so I appreciate it so very much. With that being said, we're going to, we will dismiss our work session. And let's take two minutes and we will start our city council at 7:10.